Mr. Greenhill. I'm sure. We're going to call to order the July 18th meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tarrant County College District. Do we have any public comments? Okay. Then approval of the minutes. Item three, item four. We have a motion by Dr. Morrison and a second by Ms. Ayala. We have a consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion, okay, a motion and second from the right side of the board. Item six, consideration approval of city, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, we, I'm sorry. I missed item four. Governance meeting, we did have a governance meeting. And as we go through all the items in the agenda for the public, we, we have a very good consent agenda meeting where we discuss all the items that we're going to be talking about tonight. And there is a full discussion. And so when we go over them tonight and we approve them, it's not because we haven't looked at them in detail and asked all the questions that, that we think should be asked. So bear that in mind. Audit and finance, did not have a meeting. Okay, trustee activities, Bill, would you like to start?
Well, yeah, I'll start. Last week, we, as many of you, as most of you probably know, I'm the, the Chair of the Community College Association of Texas Trustees, otherwise known as CAT. Oh, there we are. And we had our first regional meeting at the campus of Weatherford College, in Weatherford, of course. And we had, oh, there's some more pictures, okay. That we, we had a really good meeting. And I thank trustees Heed and Barr for attending, as well as the Chancellor and Reginald Gates. It was very informative. Chris Turner, Representative Chris Turner, gave a presentation on the, gave a summary of the, what happened during the legislature in regard to education, higher education, mostly about community colleges. It was very, very informative. Dr. Joette McKnown from, from McLennan College in Waco gave a presentation about accreditation. And that was very informative. A lot of, we've been through accreditation just, just recent, not recently, a couple, three years ago. But Weatherford is fixing to go through it. And I know Vernon is going through it right now. That's the reason why those, their trustees could not attend, because their creditors were in their offices at that time. But it was very informative. And then a representative from the ACCT, the National Trustee Organization, gave a presentation in regard to presidential succession, which was very interesting. And it gave a lot of input about, actually, a lot about the conduct of trustees, whether or not they want to come to your college or not. But it was, it was a very, very interesting. I just got back, but these are some pictures. And this, Dr. Todd Allen, he is the President of the university and he, of the college. And he, he was the host. And we were glad. And there's Carla Metzler, she is from North Tex, North Texas State College up in Gainesville. But we had, it was really good. And it's good to have connections with the presidents from various colleges were there as well in our region. And that's a hun, they're, they're 150 years old this year. The college is 150 years old. And they had a, a truck that, that they, they made up to, to, to show off during this 150th anniversary. And the bell, they have a, that the original bell for the college 150 years ago is actually on the campus, as well as a statue of a coyote, coyote. It's not a coyote, it's a coyote. And it was, it was really, it was a lot of fun, a lot of, a lot of good information. And we're going to have at least two more of these, probably in, in Southmost College, way down in the valley, and maybe somewhere in West Texas, or in Tyler, or in Kilgore, for the eastern region. I just got back from Horseshoe Bay. I attended, we had a, we had a breakfast meeting with the Executive Committee, the C A A T T Executive Committee, had a meeting with the Executive Committee of T A C C. And that included Jacob Farrar, who is the, is the CEO of T A C C. Brenda Hillier from San Jac, San Jacinto College is going to be the Chair next year. Greg Williams is, is the past Chair, but the, but the, their Executive Committee is made up of various presidents. And we had a very good conversation about what our plans are to work together next year and the, and the years to come. Carol Scott from Delmar College is going to be the Chair next year. I will be the past Chair, but, and so we're making plans for the future to connect the trustees and the presidents and work very hard for trustee education and advocacy for next year. That's what I, that's my report.
Thank you. Dr. Evans, do you want to say a few words about, you've been in the press a lot this past month? And well deserved.
Well, sure, thank you so much. We had the opportunity in Mansfield to open our 135-unit Bethland Pioneer Place Senior Apartment Complex. And we were happy about that. And thank you all so very much for the kind words in that regard. And we're just blessed to have a fine team, people who can make that happen. And I'm just the front guy, but they're the ones who did it, so appreciate it.
Look at that. Let's give him a hand.
Thank you, sir.
Tremendous achievement.
Thank you.
It's not staying on, there it is. To join me on August 2nd for our sixth annual breakfast with our elders at the T C C Opportunity Center. And speaking of the Opportunity Center, we were there last week for another check signing. The people, the staff over there just do an awesome job working with the Texas Workforce Commission and employers in the area. And we're very excited that we're continuously able to serve more and different populations. And while we were there, we had a conversation about having some of our employer partners do localized recruitment for potential employees, and then they would go through a training program. So I know staff's going to follow up on that, taking it through the proper channels, Chancellor. And I think it'll be very successful. The employers were very excited to do that, because they're continually looking for people to train and people who want to be trained. So it was a great outing, thank you.
Well, thank you. Are you going to have a lot of students at the breakfast for elders?
Yes, we'll have representatives from scholar athletes from the Dunbar High School. Talked with the principal today. There'll be at least three different components of students there. So they're very excited about coming to, to the campus and, and being a part of it.
Do you have a speaker this year?
Well, we always have some firepower. And yes, we do have a confirmed get, honored guest who has stopped six routes. Many of state Senator Royce West worked, trained, and was kept out of trouble while he was attending U T A. When he was on the staff at the Martin Luther King Community Center. And he has committed to come and, and to reconnect with some of those seniors who have been a very instrumental part of his life.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barr, you might add to the CAT thing if you'd like, and then you have an announcement as well.
Well, I did attend the CAT event in Weatherford. And it's nice to see trustee Greenhill and his leadership role there. I also was pleased to attend the grant presentation at the Opportunity Center that Dr. Morrison mentioned a minute ago. Several of the trustees were there, along with the Chancellor and, and a number of other key Tarrant County College people. It was a presentation of a $166,000 check from the Texas Workforce Commission. There is the check right there. And this is, this is really neat. Company Granberry, Grand Prairie based, can't speak, a Grand Prairie based company. Triumph Accessories Services, which is involved in aeronautics and aviation. Good company, and this is a training grant to help their, them train employees. You know, it's just another way Tarrant County College and the opportunity of serving our business community in Fort Worth. And I think we're all committed to seeing that, that type of service grow in, in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. President, might I just add that I was reminded that the Opportunity Center first opened under the mayorship of Mayor Barr, when that was first opened by the Perro Companies. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that better, anything?
I do not have any additional, but of course, just happy to be here tonight. Thank you.
And Ms. Ayala.
Well, I do, I have some good things to share. Had the opportunity to attend and participate in the Guidado Casero Foundation Annual Scholarship. T C C was very well represented there. The foundation focuses on empowering Latino students to become leaders who will advance the healthcare industry and in, in our community. Its founder, Doctora Carmen Santiago, shared a personal reflection and her experience about her goal and her vision. And she recognized T C C for their vision and support and commended us on the impact that T C C has on the partnership with Guidado Casero in fulfilling a dire need for nurses. A third of the scholarships awarded that night were presented to, these are T C C students here. And over $40,000 were presented in scholarships. So we're very, very proud of these students. Thank you to Dr. Ume and his dedicated staff for their, for volunteering and participating. And also, Dr. Madison, thank you for your support. And there were so many others who were actively involved in this event. So it was very successful, and it will benefit our students in our community, so. Also want to make mention of, in keeping with the college goals and the mission, T C C continues to be a visionary partner in meeting the workforce and educational needs of our community. And as such, that's evident in the Latina STEM Fellowship that supports some 20-plus students. And there they are, young female students that participated this summer. And these are students that are interested in pursuing some sort of STEM career field. And so what the program does is it helps them with skill building, career exploration, education planning, and mentorship. The fellowship is in its fourth year. And over that four-year period, we probably have had about 100 young ladies that have gone through the program. And we are tracking their matriculation into STEM-related fields. Because they range in age from upper middle school up to, I believe, college freshman. We, you know, we're going to see how, what they decide to do and see the wonderful things that they're going to do. There's a photo of the, the students there at Texas A&amp;M. But what I do want to highlight is a couple of things is, two of the students that have completed the program, one of them has received a full-ride scholarship to Texas A&amp;M to pursue her degree in biology. And another one has received a full scholarship to T C U to also pursue her degree in biology. Two of the other, two other students were actually active and participating in a national conference in California that really did highlight their, the impact of the program and the influence that T C C has had in, in this experience. And it also has obviously provided some exposure for the students, for the college, and for potential partners as well. And one other thing that I found very interesting is that in collaboration with T C U, there was a pre and post-study of the fellowship. And the pre-study that focused is on the face of a scientist. They were asking the students to describe what the face of a scientist would look like based on gender, their age. And it was very interesting, because prior to the fellowship, they were all describing, it's going to be a young male, it's going to be somebody that perhaps Asian or some other descent. And then after that, post-fellowship, they were actually identifying with other females, they were identifying other ethnicities as being people that were the face of a scientist. So to me, that just demonstrates the impact and the importance of this particular program, because it's allowing the students to see their true potential and to see themselves in those roles, which has been very good. So thank you to the partners that have been involved in this, in this fellowship. Lockheed Martin, James and Dorothy Doss Foundation, and another group called Litter Trust. And I want to congratulate Dr. Sophia Garcia for her vision, and also to Dr. Madison for your support. And so many others that have supported her in this effort. And you certainly have cultivated a really good environment, so we're meeting the students where they are. And want to commend the Chancellor for, you know, establishing that collaborative culture. So thank you so much.
Thank you. It's the Board President's duty and honor to make a few appointments. And you may know that the, the Foundation Board has two positions for members of this board. One is the Board President, and the other is one of the other trustees. So tonight, I'd like to make the announcement that Kenneth Barr will be the next appointee to a board position in the Tarrant County College Foundation. Thank you for serving. Okay, consent, consent agenda. Will I entertain a motion? Dr. Patrick?
Second.
Second by, Dr. And all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number six, consideration approval of city of Fort Worth emergency access and maintenance easement at Northwest Campus, in the amount unknown at this time. Not, not available. Not applicable. Will I entertain a motion?
So moved.
So moved. And a second by Dr. Evans. Item number seven, consideration approval of contract with Chambers Engineering.
We need to take the vote.
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's fine.
We do need.
Move along, of course, yeah.
Now, this will allow us to move forward with the naming of the new road at Northwest Campus.
Right.
Have we picked out a name?
Yes, ma'am, we have. It's T C C Lakeside Drive.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, or no, we have a motion.
We have a motion, call the question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Item number seven.
Motion carried.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number seven, consideration and approval of contract with Chambers Engineering to provide student union and bookstore concrete paving replacement at South Campus. Mr. Prather.
Yes, this is for replacement of failing courtyard concrete that is a safety concern.
Okay. Mr. Barr moves for approval, and Ms. Ayala, Ayala, second.
That's it.
All in favor, aye.
Simple.
Motion carries. Item number eight, consideration approval of contract with Brant Companies to provide Phase One Emergency Power Distribution Installation at South Campus, in the amount of $390,214.29. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Mr. Prather.
Yes, sir, this will provide backup power for emergency lighting in critical I T locations.
Call the question.
Question, questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number nine, consideration approval of deductive change order with weatherproofing services for roof restoration on the South Campus, in the amount of $34,675.
So moved.
A motion and a second.
You got to love the money back.
We take it, every cent.
But this is the only one on the agenda.
That's true, we'll try, we'll do better next time.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Item number 10. Consideration and approval of contract with Chambers Engineering to provide building services, drive, construction improvements on the Northeast Campus, in the amount of $188,507.91. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second.
Yes, sir, this provides large trucks a more efficient and safer delivery path to the warehouse.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries. Item number 11, consideration approval of contract with Infinity Contractors to provide chiller replacement installation at Northeast Campus, in the amount of $782,476. We hear motion?
So moved.
Dr. Patrick?
Oh, second.
Second. Mr. Greenhill?
Yes, sir, this is for the installation of previously purchased chiller. Y'all approved several months ago.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries. Item number 12, consideration and approval of contract with Fort Worth Electric to provide Phase One Emergency Power Distribution Installation on Southeast Campus, in the amount of $408,777.29. Do we hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Greenhill, the second. Dr. Evans?
Yes, sir, again, this will provide backup power for emergency lighting in critical I T locations on campus.
Questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries. Item 13, consideration approval of contract with Freedom Construction to provide flexible, flexible, large-scale learning environments at Turney River, East Fork Campus, in the amount of $164,651.62. Mayor motion?
So moved.
Dr. Evans?
Second.
Second, Mr. Greenhill?
Yes, sir, this will accommodate three small classrooms, but also can convert into one large classroom.
Questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco. Item 14, consideration and approval of three, of a three-year contract renewal with mainline information systems for milestone X-Protect corporate device license, in the amount of $149,393.70. Do we hear a motion?
Second.
Ms. Ayala? Second. Dr. Evans?
Yes, this is a three-year contract for our surveillance systems used by the police department. It's district-wide.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item 15, consideration approval of contract with Microsoft to provide Microsoft Premier Support D S E Services, in the amount of $161,400. Do we hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Greenhill, Dr. Evans?
Yes, this is a one-year contract with Microsoft for a dedicated support engineer to help them work on our S S E M product.
Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item 16, consideration approval of purchase agreement with S K C Communications Products for audiovisual technology upgrades, in the amount of $535,080.8. Do we hear a motion? Ms. Ayala? Second by Dr. Evans?
Yes, this is the, part of the I T's refresh across the district for all A V equipment that's been identified as end of life.
Questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Item 17, consideration approval of a two-year contract with Ferocity Aviation to provide training for helicopter pilot students at Northwest Campus, Seattle, in the amount of $500,000 not to exceed. Dr. Blankenbacher, we have a motion?
So moved.
By Dr. Morrison, second by Dr. Patrick.
This is to transition the current flight training that USAG is providing to a new vendor, and this vendor specializes in helicopter flight training.
Questions? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item eighteen, consideration approval of US Aviation Group proposed new flight fee schedules amount.
Not applicable.
Not applicable.
Okay. We've had a contract with US Aviation Group since 2015, and this is a request for increased operational costs by USAG in the costs incurred for both the training and in payment of their pilots. And we've done some benchmarking and we feel that the request is reasonable.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, the second. Dr. Patrick? Any questions? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Ms. Chang, financial report.
This is the ten months of the fiscal year, and the majority of our revenues in, we have two more months for state appropriation. So ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent income already coming. The expenditure we, as a ten months, we spend about two hundred seventy-three million and nineteen million by encumbrances. And for ten months, the average should be eighty-three percent, but we spend below the ten-month mark, and we should be finished the fiscal year in the black.
Good. Way to go.
And we had, pool has decreased about three point eight million dollars, and we reduce, we had one agency fund that was due ten million dollars. And so we decreased the total in the portfolio about thirteen million dollars. The year is a two point three, six percent. It's a little below the twelve-month TBL, two point four three. And the WAM is a three hundred fifty.
Okay. Questions? Thank you, Ms. Chang.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chancellor?
Yes, thank you. We have a number of introductions tonight. Dr. Jordan, will you go first, please?
Good evening, Chancellor Giavanini, President Heed, members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce two new staff members to TCC South Campus. First, Trishelle Davenport. Trishelle Davenport comes to us as Director of Trio Programs, including Student Support Services and Upward Bound. Trishelle has served in higher education for more than twenty years, with sixteen of those years spent empowering students to succeed through trio programs. Trishelle comes to us from Georgia State University, where she served as Program Director for Trio Support Services. For the last eight years, Trishelle established the first trio student support services program at the Clarkson Campus of Georgia State University and has served as a point of contact for homeless foster care and at-risk student populations. She began her professional career in higher education as a career counselor and Veterans Affairs Coordinator at Delgado Community College. Since that time, she has served in various administrative positions, working to ensure students are equipped with the resources necessary to succeed in post-secondary education and beyond. She has a master's degree in industry and social agencies counseling from Xavier University of Louisiana, and she completed undergraduate studies at the University of Southwestern Louisiana Lafayette. Trishelle enjoys traveling, music, and spending time with family and friends. She's a native of New Orleans, Louisiana. Help me welcome Trishelle Davenport.
President Heed, members of the board, President Jordan, and Chancellor Giovanni. I wish to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited to serve here with TCC and to serve with the three goals and eight principles. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Dr. Romero Thomas Sosa. But if you call him by his first name, he may not answer. He goes by Thomas Sosa. Thomas joins us as the newly-appointed Dean of Mathematics, Natural Sciences, and Kinesiology on the South Campus. As a Clara graduate, former Faculty Association Senator, and a highly skilled individual adept at team and consensus building, Dr. Sosa is keenly focused on student and faculty success. Both students and faculty give him high marks for his approach to teaching and learning within the classroom. Several colleagues praise his in-depth scientific knowledge and approach to teaching that continuously engages students. Some examples of his leadership include supplemental instruction, the Quality Enhancement Plan Assessment, and serving as pedagogy lead for the Integrated Instruction Learning Environment He brings to the dean's role compassion for others, strong organizational skills, and a passion for innovation in teaching that serves him well. He is a true servant leader. Dr. Sosa holds a doctorate in Cell and Molecular Biology from the University of Texas at Austin and a Master's of Science in Biochemistry and a Bachelor of Science in Biology from Texas State University, San Marcos. In addition, he recently completed the AACC John Roush Future Leaders Institute in 2018. On a personal note, Thomas lives near the museum district of Fort Worth and enjoys traveling, cooking, gardening, cycling, and live music. Help me welcome Dr. Thomas Sosa.
Members of the board, guests, Dr. Jordan, thank you so much. As Dr. Jordan mentioned, while I am new to the South Campus, I'm not new to the college. So I come to South by way of the Northwest Campus, and I'm so appreciative of my time there. The friendships made, Daiju is a close friend of mine, the support structure that was in place there, Dr. Odie, Dr. Cooper, thank you so much for your support, and importantly, the mentorship along the way. I can't say enough about how supportive Dr. Blankenbaker has been throughout my time there. And having said all of that, I'm so excited to join the leadership team at South. Dr. Jordan has put together a dynamic, engaged leadership team, and I'm ready to hit the ground running and do some good things for the college. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Madison?
Good evening, Board of Directors, Dr. Giavanini. The Trinity River Campus is pleased to welcome Dr. Thomas Mills as the newly-appointed Vice President of Academic Affairs. Dr. Mills has more than twenty-eight years of experience in serving various, in serving in various leadership capacities in higher education, and he recently served as Vice President for Academic Affairs at Seminole State College, a comprehensive public community college in Seminole, Oklahoma. As VPAA at SSC, he has fostered a culture of learning and spearheaded the development of numerous transfer and workforce programs to include physical therapist assistants and engineering technician AAS programs. Moreover, he has led successful student success initiatives such as math pathways and a faculty advising model, which nearly doubled SSC's graduations, graduations, graduation rate. Prior to his tenure at SSC, he served nine years as a biology instructor and a basketball coach at Rose State College in Midwest City, Oklahoma. And if he's ever prompted to speak of his coaching days, he will modestly admit that he's led teams to win NJCAA regional championships and has been recognized as NJ, N-CJA Region Two Coach of the Year by his peers several times. Dr. Mills holds a PhD in Biochemistry from the University of Houston, a BS in Biology from the University of Central Oklahoma, and an AA in Education from Rose State College. Tom and his wife Yvonne share their home with their pug Cricket and enjoy spending time with his three children, who are currently, who all currently attend graduate school. In his personal time, he likes to read, lift weights, hike, camp, and build things with his hands. Tom's unique mix of leadership experiences, team spirit, and proven dedication to student success will be a valuable asset to Tarrant County College. Please help me welcome Dr. Thomas Mills to the TCC team.
President Heed, members of the board, Chancellor Giavanini. Very honored to be here to represent President Madison and the amazing TR team and the district as a whole. Everyone has been incredibly inviting. It's been a, it's been a whirlwind, as you would expect, coming from a smaller school, but absolutely love it, and I'm really looking forward to working on our three goals and eight principles. So thanks for the opportunity.
Please help me welcome Dr. Kenya Ayers, the new college TCC Northeast Campus President. Kenya comes to us from William Rainey Harper College outside Chicago, where she served as Vice President and Chair of the Board for the Northwest Educational Council for Student Success, where she was also previously the Dean of Academic Enrichment and Engagement. She brings a wealth of experience in academic support operations, institutional effectiveness, international studies, academic resource centers, and the students' first-year experience, having served as an Associate Provost at Kettering University and a Dean of Student Services for Trinity Washington University. Kenya was recently an ACE, American Council on Education Fellow, and was selected for the American Association of Community Colleges Future Presidents Institute. She holds an EDD in Educational Leadership and Cultural Studies from the University of Houston, a Master of Science in Clinical Psychology from Eastern Michigan University, and a Bachelor's Degree in Psychology from the University of Michigan. Kenya?
Good evening, President Heed, to the members of the board, to Chancellor Giavanini. It is a joy and a delight to join the TCC family. I am TCC proud, and I look forward to serving our students in excellence. Thank you for the opportunity.
Please help me also welcome Susan Alanese, the college's new Chief Operating Officer. Susan comes to TCC from the city of Fort Worth, where she served as Assistant City Manager since 1996. Susan brings more than twenty years of experience in the operational management of a large organization, which includes leadership of large-scale systems, implementation, debt sales, financial reporting, and budgeting, and a 1.7 billion-dollar operation with 7,000 employees. She is skilled in benefit administration and employee relation issues, and has been involved in extensive capital delivery, economic development, and tourism initiatives. Her professional profile also includes an extensive track record of convening stakeholders to solve complex issues and manage large projects. Susan earned her bachelor's degree in political science from Texas State University and her Master's in Public Administration from the University of Texas at Arlington. Welcome, Susan.
Thank you, President, members of the board. I'm really delighted to be part of the chancellor's team. I'm new to higher education, but not new to serving this community, and I know the importance of the work that this organization does, so I'm thrilled to be a part of it. Thank you.
It's truly amazing to me, and quite an honor, I think, for the college to be able to attract this incredible talent, attract and retain this incredible talent. So welcome to the team. So thank you. We are now going to adjourn to a closed session, and then we will re-adjourn here and then close the meeting. We do not anticipate any action, but we will be deliberating real property, Section 551.072, Texas Government Code, the real property discussion will address the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate. Two, deliberation on personnel matters, Section 551.074, Texas Government Code. Consultation with attorneys, Section 551.071, Texas Government Code. For purposes of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any subjects or matters authorized by law, the deliberation will include any pending slash contemplated litigation. And four, deliberation regarding the deployment or specific occasions for implement of security personnel or devices, Section 551.076, Texas Government Code. So we anticipate no action, so those of you who are not part of the closed session can go home. Thank you for being here.